For coming to the session of the board commissioners meeting today is Monday, November 4th. All three commissioners are present. At this time, I will ask you to stand Commissioner Barsley will lead us to prayer. And Commissioner Wright will lead us in pledge allegiance.
Bow with me in attitude prayer. Gracious God, Heavenly Father, as we come to you this morning. We are grateful for life and for the ability to go about doing the business that's set before us, not only in the community, but for the government as well. And Lord, you know, we're on the eve of big decisions for our, our nation, our state, our county. We're asking for your direction and your help in all that's going on. And as we get out and do our civic duty, we also pray that you'll help us to do our spiritual duty, follow you, to hear your voice and to seek your wisdom, counsel and direction. We pray for the decisions made today, that they will be led by you. Well, thank you for all that's going on and we do pray. In those war torn areas, Ukraine and the Middle East, that your hand will guide and protect as well. Well, thank you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. We will move on to approval of claims, minutes and payroll. We have a pre-approval that needs ratified for October 28th, 2024. General fund, $191,473.29. Other, $101,716.80. Highway department, $57,619.55. For a grand total of $350,809.64. Pre-approval was given by myself on 10/28/2024. And I will look for a motion. There's no questions or discussion to ratify that pre-approval.
Mr. President, I would move that we ratify the amount of $350,809.64 pre-approval dated 10/28/24.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Wright, second by Commissioner Barsley. Any other questions or discussion at this time? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. For claims dated 11/4 of 2024, general fund, $64,777.7. Other is $306,369.62. Highway department, $42,819.48. For a grand total of $413,966.77. And if there's any, no questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to pay the invoice headed reports for 11/4 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Barsley, second by Commissioner Wright. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will move on to pre-approved claims on October 22nd, 2024. I pre-approved a $559 claim to Constellation Energy, 10/22/2024, in the amount of $28,000 to Berry Bunker Chevrolet. 10/29/2024, $5,554.17 to AT&amp;T. On 10/29/2024, the amount $4,266.66 to Northwest Bank. And on November 1st, 2024, $15 to Northwest Bank. And I will look for a motion to ratify those pre-approvals.
Support Marion, please, I'm sorry. I would make a motion that we ratify the pre-approved claims.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Wright, second by Commissioner Barsley. Is there any discussion about those pre-approvals? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. President, I know we've tried in the past, but there's still a kind of a scheduling rotation and with certain departments, they get their bills right before it's time to get requests to the auditor. And again, if we could at least ask for a change in their billing cycles or ask them to ask for a change in their billing cycles, that might help us.
Okay. Good advice. Finally, on payroll number 22, pre-approval was given on 10/23/2024 for pay dated 10/25/2024. Gross amount was $638,348.65. And since we don't really discuss payroll, I will entertain a motion to approve that ratificator, ratify that pre-approval.
Motion to ratify the payroll number 22.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Barsley, second by Commissioner Wright. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is approved. We have no minutes to approve. So we will move on to, we will, any questions about the monthly clerk of courts report?
No.
We will show that as received. We will move on to communications and board updates. Madam Auditor, since I always skip over you every single meeting, I'm starting with you first, so.
I understand because I have nothing to report.
All right. Is Mr. Jackson in the room by chance? I don't see him. Okay, all right. Mr. Hicks, anything from you today?
We're good.
Okay. We have two of our members of the county council here with us, Mr. Middlesworth and Mr. Polling. You gentlemen have anything for the good of the order today?
Our national regular scheduled council meetings, the 20th.
Okay. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Did I miss anybody? All right, IT report, Marcus.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I just got a single item this morning. The IDAX people that work on the 911 stuff, so Kevin's a little bit more knowledgeable than me, but they have implemented a two factor requirement on basically devices that have access to the IDAX program. So basically this includes our computers and dispatch and there's a handful in probation. And there is basically the guys in the cars. You know, because IDAX basically is tied into the CAT system. So I worked with Central Dispatch Director Kevin Hicks on a count. And we spoke with the CAT vendor and they currently support Cisco Duo as a two factor vendor provider that is compatible with their software. And I got a quote from CWG. And it's for 36 months and it's in the amount of $7,020. So we were just looking to get that pre-approved. Now, I initially I thought I put in for additional appropriation for that amount because it wasn't factored into my budget initially. After speaking with Kevin, it sounds like he has some funds he would be able to put towards it. So.
12/22 contractual.
I'm sorry, sir, say it again.
12/22 contractual.
Is that the only bid you got?
Yeah, that's the only one that they said they support.
Okay.
Kevin may have to answer that. Do we still support the terminal at Marion or are they paying for that?
They pay for that.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of that bid?
Yeah, first, the quote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to use that, right?
Well, not, not Duo, but.
CWG.
Yeah, CWG, yeah. I bought from them plenty of times. Yeah, we get our IT Ninja software through there and buy various hardware equipment from them.
I've heard of it. You said, I'm sorry, I was, did you say you do business with this company?
Yeah.
Are you paying it? Because it looks like there's a lease option. 203 a month or are we paying a monthly or?
No, it's, it's annual fee.
Okay.
But I think it's just a one time thing and we get 36 months on that.
Okay, the, the quote here, it's got, it's got two options. It's got a month, it's got a monthly lease option. So, okay. Do you see that? Any other questions or discussion for Marcus?
I don't think so.
When, when do you need to have that, Marcus?
They, they wanted it put in, what was it, October, October 1st. And we were, we, we had a demo account or a trial account. And so they've been using it. So this is just a, you know, so we could verify it worked and everything. So now we can start paying for it.
And so we, we obviously have to pay for that. The state doesn't help us with that at all. Have we, have we checked? Have we looked into that, that piece?
We, I will.
Okay.
We're paying out of my 12/22 account, which is my 911 account.
Are you, are you paying the whole amount?
Yes.
Okay.
Like that question, 911 user piece.
I heard him right. It's the only game in town anyway.
That's the way I took it.
Yep.
So.
I would move to approve the request to spend the $7,020 with CWD regarding our Duo Essentials 36 month agreement.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Barsley. We have a second from Commissioner Wright. Do you gentlemen have any other questions at this time for Marcus?
I just think in the future, you might want to try to get that contract to us before the meeting and stuff. Let us talk a little bit about it and things. I don't know when you got it, things like that. But I know, you know, in the future.
Yeah, I, I discussed a few weeks ago something I was trying to get sooner, but they had issues with it in their computer system and it just, it took a while to get it to me. Because I was trying, hoping to get at the first meeting. It just didn't time out right.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is approved.
All right, thanks so much, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Then do you want me to hold off until, you know, Kevin checks on the?
If you could check on that?
Yeah, because it's, it's good for 30 days if we have time.
And is there a contract to it other than just the invoice or no?
Not to my knowledge, no. It's just this, you basically buy it and you get it and you pay for 36 months.
Okay. This is, I'll make sure Kyle took a look at it.
Yeah, but I mean, I can, I can double check with them, but they didn't. There wasn't one where it just kind of, you buy it and you get the service for 36 months.
Okay, Kevin, if you could let Justin know whatever, whichever way, whatever, whatever you find out, whether it's a thumbs up or thumbs down, if you let him know, then he'll let us know. Thank you. Mr. White, Highway Department.
Morning.
Morning.
Update you on a few things. The recycle center building, the material will probably be shipped around December 12th. Then we'll have a project manager come out and work with us on that. We're probably going to have to close the facility for about a week during construction. So it'll probably be towards the end of December 1st of the year kind of thing, but we are working on that. So update you on that. Bridge 84, 38th Street Bridge over the Missinewell River, we poured the deck last Wednesday. They've got scheduled for asphalt next week on the approaches. So hopefully maybe towards the end of next week or first following week that will be back opened up. So working on that. Just had two big pipes delivered out to 300 North and 1100 East. One will go on 300 North, the other one will go on 1100 East. And so we'll try to get them here in the next couple of weeks. Get those two projects done. So working on that. I've been working with Kyle on the road use agreement with Blackford County on their wind farm road use agreement. And hopefully next meeting, we will have a copy of that contract for you guys to sign off on. If you want me to, I can email it to you prior so you can look at it. I've been working with Kyle and the consulting firm that will do the inspection on it to make sure we got everything we need to on that contract. So. And then I was going to bring up, I did meet with a company on the equipment that council allowed us to get for the highway department. So I've started working on trying to get some numbers for that. I met with them last week on distributor, et cetera, great all. So I'm working on that number. So if you want, go ahead and break up on that sign.
Hold off on that one.
Okay, well, I can present one to Mr. Wright. If you guys want to add anything, please let me know. So wherever you need. I did meet with the consulting firm on the bridge inspection for 2025, 2029, last Monday. So they'll be working with getting an agreement together. And like I said before, you guys will have to look at it and then we'll have to send the state, make sure they approve it and then go from there. So working on that. That's all I have unless you don't have any.
What's going on out on State Route 9 by Glendale, just north of the airport? Yeah, they've got, they've got the, the portable
Traffic lights.
Traffic lights.
Oh, really?
Yeah, set up there. Had it all weekend. So I just wasn't aware of anything. I don't know if they're doing anything with the lane.
They were doing that low, low bridge, that low bridge area in that dip.
Yeah.
I think they were doing some surface work on it. That's why they're doing a single lane instead of shutting it down completely.
Okay.
Any new word on State Route 9 North Bridge?
Only word I've heard is the end of November it's supposed to be done. So I heard the other day that they had their form machine in to pour the side of the bridge. So it's getting close to getting done, I guess. All I have, I'm going to be doing that.
I'm good. Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to old business, ARPA discussion. Gentlemen, we do have a little bit of business to take care of on this. So as you have in front of you there, you have the amount that's already been appropriated on 11/20/2024 to be presented to the council. We've got $500,000 for the city blight project for Mayor Morrell. Animal control and care, building repairs, animal control and care services that we're prepaying for 10 years. Sheriff's vehicles. BW construction scoping fee. And then at the, which we're going to discuss here in just a few minutes, approximately a little over $2 million that we're going to talk about. Either we're going to use for the D home or salaries for 2025. But what we need to, what we need to do today is we need to rescind. Because at one time we had taken airport sewer water project to the council for $500,000. And Mill Township Fire Administration Complex for $200,000. We had taken that to the county council and we need to rescind that today. Just, just those two items. So I hope I was clear on that.
Just cleaning things up so that we don't have $700,000 attached to a spending plan and don't have $700,000.
Exactly. That's exactly right. So.
I would move to rescind the airport sewer water project, $500,000. And the Mill Township Fire Admin Complex request at $200,000 to balance our books for the ARPA money support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barsley and a second by Commissioner Wright to rescind the airport sewer water project in the amount of $500,000 and to rescind the Mill Township Fire Administration Complex in the amount of $200,000. Any other questions or discussion about that at this time? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is taken care of. I know that Connor Sullivan's on. We may want to discuss with him if there's anything else you need to do with the spending plan. Okay, perfect.
Connor, could you?
Good morning, Connor.
Pies.
Good morning, commissioners.
Do you have, is there anything to add as far as rescinding the, what we just? Anything to add based on what we just did there?
Mr. President, no, not at this time. But I think that by updating it, you'll have an accurate spending plan. It's like Commissioner Barsley said, you don't want to have that in your plan if there's not $700,000. Justin and I have been working on getting some of these after they've been approved to have them in writing and have a contract in place. Justin got me some of the information we need for ones is, and Justin, correct me, ones is the Causeway, the Greenway for MOU for the, the not-for-profit and then the other one is at Jonesboro, correct, Justin?
That's correct.
And so we will have those agreements for you guys to sign. And that will meet the, the treasury's definition or requirement of obligated. So those ones will be taken care of. And as they come along and have been approved by the commissioners and appropriate by the council, we can keep getting those knocked out and have them in writing so that we can meet that December 31st, 2024 deadline. And then the next deadline, I just want to point out, I know it's a little bit of ways and ways, but it's never too, it's never an issue to think ahead. We get all the funds obligated by the end of this year. We have to have them actually spent for the construction, the projects constructed or whatever it is by December 81st, 26. I just want to make sure I put that on everyone's radar again. I know we're over 26 months away from that, but I just want to make sure people are aware of that second deadline. That's all I have for this portion, Mr. President.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, sir.
Agreements with the city of Marion, you're going to have Connor Sullivan work on those agreements as well?
Yes.
As the Carbon Greenway and what was the other one?
Jonesboro.
Jonesboro, yeah. I didn't know Marion was mentioned or not, but we'll need an agreement with them as well.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
That is correct, Mr. Middlesworth. That is correct, yes. And I can work with Justin to get the right information so he can get that taken care of. Since, since for not-for-profits, we'll, and I'm, maybe it's more information than you all care to have, but if it's not-for-profit, we'll do an MOU. If it's another political subdivision, we'll do an interlocal, which will have to be signed by the commissioners and the county council. And then also the legislative and fiscal body of that political subdivision too. Just to make sure we tie that up, okay?
Yeah, okay, sounds good. Anything else from Mr. Sullivan at this time?
Uh, no, Mr. President, I think there's a few things later on the list, but I, that's all I have for the spending plan, sir.
Okay, you're going to hang out. You're going to hang out with us for a little bit?
Yes, sir. I'll be, I'll be available for the rest of the meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to new business. Number one under new business is going to be tabled until our next meeting. So that takes us to zoning map amendment proposal. James Straus, area plan. See Katie and I'll see Mr. Straus.
He's on the phone call, so you're kind of stuck with me, I guess.
If we have to.
I guess. So what this is, it's comforts of home. It's been a business since, as far as I can remember. They've just been ag. So they wanted to do storage units. And with being zoned ag, they weren't allowed to do it by right. So we switched them to general business, which allows them to do this by right and puts them in the correct zoning. That they should have been a long time ago. They've been getting taxed as a business. So that's pretty much why we're bringing it to you guys to get approved.
And I was at this area plan meeting and it was a short discussion. It went through by a vote of, I believe, this unanimous vote. So. Just, just for your gentleman's information.
Did we need to advertise this for ordinance purposes today?
I don't, I don't believe so. I think, I think we're good.
So the, basically the public hearing happened in the area plan and all we have to do is get the ordinance.
Yes, sir. Yep. And again, there was no, there was no real. There was nothing contentious at the meeting. It was a pretty short discussion. It was voted, voted on 10/0. Kind of a no-brainer, in my opinion.
You ready for a motion? I would make a motion that we, we approve the certification of the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment. Got a favorable recommendation of 10/0 with the area plan.
Number is?
And that number is?
Nine.
So nine, 2024.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Wright with a second by Commissioner Barsley to approve ordinance number nine dash 2024. Any other discussion or questions for Ms. Cable? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is approved. Thank you. Ambulance territory request. Don Hardness.
I presented you with a change of response zones last week. It's a startup of two new volunteer units, one in the Pleasant Township area, be based in Sweetsir. The other one at Mill Township Fire Department. So we're kind of creating a little zone there for them. There was a little bit of area that Marion General was covering for us in the county. We'll just envelop that with Mill, maybe move Swayze over a little bit. When we finalize the lines, we'll get them a copy. It's, you've seen the maps. It's horrible to look at because they're so small, but it's second nature to us and it's hard to explain to someone else. But it will cover all the county areas on a volunteer basis with these two new volunteer units. For the first time, I've, I've been here 29 years next month and we've never covered those areas. So we got some volunteers out there willing to do it. I want to take advantage of that. I know you sent that to Eric. Eric didn't see a problem with it?
I'm sorry.
Eric, who?
Eric.
First singer. Eric?
Kyle.
Kyle. There isn't Eric though, right? I went to school, I'm sorry. Craig, Eric, Kyle.
There's a bunch of them.
Yes.
No, he's not.
Okay. It's not finalized yet because we're still drawing the lines. You got, it looks easy to draw lines on a map till you start coming up with houses and roads and which side of the road and all that. So we're still finalizing that. We had an issue with an antenna or a truck not fitting in the garage in Sweetsir because of antenna. We're trying to take care of that. Mill Township building, our problem with their new building, did they, are they done with their approach? Does anyone know? Their, so see their building's not completely ready yet either. So it's just kind of waiting to happen.
I know we've been in discussions with Marion General Hospital. I know we've been in discussions with Marion General Hospital. Has this been kind of going over with them at all?
Yeah, I talked to Dave Bard last week and again, I didn't give him the maps because I don't know exactly where they're at yet, but I will make sure that he knows what they are too and dispatch as well. That it's, there's going to be some issues at the first. Like I said, it's been a long time since those old lines have been there. There'll be some growing pains, but we'll get used to it. And in the end, I mean, if, if, if Sweetser's in service, they're the first one to go to their new area. If they're not, it's the next closest truck, whether it's us or Marion and Marion's on board with that. We do the same thing for them. We, we go into the City of Marion all the time because that's the right thing to do.
Mutual aid is very, very good between children.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think it's positive for our, our citizens to have more response units out. I think just as we discuss it in front of, in public, do we want to wait till we actually see the, the final cut territories for each, each unit before we agree to it or in principle, do we want to agree to it waiting to see the, the final map? How, how, you want to go on that?
I'd like to wait. How long do you have, how long do you think it'd take to get the finals?
Um, just maybe a week or so. I can probably go to the next meeting.
I think, I think that would be the best name. And then if anybody has anything, welcome calls, welcome, anything that anybody wants to give us a call on and stuff, give us their opinion.
Sure.
I think it would be great, even though we're having a public meeting on it now and stuff.
Yeah. I gave you, what I gave you last week is what we're looking at, but that's basically all of the county. What I want to give you is what will be Sweetser, what will be Swayze, what will be Mill, the exact breakdown. And I might have to, I don't know, maybe Angie knows better, I might have to outsource a bigger map than an eight and a half by 11. I don't know if anyone has the capability of doing that here anymore. So I may do a mock-up. It may be hand drawn, but a mock-up before I pay for a map, you know, if there's any problems with the mock-up, I don't want to do anything permanent until you guys approve it. So we may just do a mock-up of a, maybe a map of that size, you know, something bigger that you can actually see the roads and the road names and then we'll do something more permanent afterwards.
So there's nothing in area plan that could do a larger map?
I believe they do, they have a-
Do they have something big?
A larger printer.
I would think.
About markets. They, they did, but.
See, I'm old, it's been a long time since I worked here. We could just go print a big map anytime we wanted to and now I know technology.
But you can check in the recorder's office. I know Kathy, Kathy's, because the Commissioners, they paid for that.
Yeah, and we'll just, we'll just draw it on there as we want to present it and then if there's any issues, then before we make it permanent, we'll, we'll make the changes. Yeah, we can do that. That's, that's no problem.
If we approve this, is there any additional cost to the county?
Uh, there's not really. We already have the trucks. The only thing I can think, I mean, we're already covering the runs for the most part. There's a possibility that we'll cover more runs in like the northwest territory than we have in the past because Marion's been doing that. That's minimal. And then of course, along with that, you've got fuel and medical supplies and stuff like that, but we already have the trucks. That's the big one right there and the equipment, those are the big ones. And it really, I just don't really see any major cost, very minimal at that.
The only cost really is the billing. We bill if they use our services, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a win, yeah, because we collect on those as well. We can track that too. I mean, that would be interesting to track to see.
Yeah, that would.
What new runs we've got that we wouldn't have normally got and see what our collections are on that. That's easy to track nowadays, so.
Any other questions for Ms. Hardness? So I believe we're, we'll just table this, we'll table this, take it under advisement and then you'll come back at our next meeting with-
Which is what?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? Okay, I can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we are removing number four from the agenda, so that takes us to number five, scoping presentation, jail solutions. Mr. Batten and his BW crew.
Good morning.
Appreciate the time. Today, we wanted to come in and talk about a handful of things. We can talk through our current scoping agreement and anything we need to do to update that. We've got the RQAW team here, Pete, Sanjay and Cole. Like to give you guys a kind of a preview of what we've been working on. We're not final in terms of this current scoping phase, but we'll give you an update on that and then talk through what the next steps look like as it relates to scoping. So high level, past several weeks, we've been working with the committee. Our main focus initially has been to look at the D home and a renovation there as well as some addition. We understand that there's been, you know, other things that have been studied as it relates to the new jail. Budget and cost are the biggest things that we've been focusing on. How many needs can we meet for as little dollars as possible? So the option we've been working on, we think, is a much more affordable option and ultimately it's, it can have many options within that. We're not just going to come with, hey, here it is. Our job's to look at options and present and let you all make those decisions on what you want us to do. So with that, I think, let's start with RQAW, let them turn it over to the floor to them to give you guys an update of what that looks like and then we can talk scoping amendment and next steps with that. So with that, Pete Peterson.
Thanks, Justin. For the record, Pete Peterson, Vice President of Building and Places at RQAW. Again, our folks have been through the building three or four times in full mechanical, along with the architects that are here. While we've not done a myriad of options, we have done what we think would be an effective option, understanding the budget constraints that the county has and trying to then also get to the point where we give you as much of your need as possible and keep us within that budget. So I've got our lead justice studio architect, Sanjay Patel, Cole Walthers is, is the project manager on it and they're going to go ahead and present the findings on this and please stop us at any point, ask any questions during that process.
He's going to get a flash drive so I can put my desk, my desktop up on here, but I guess we can just go ahead and-
Good morning. Sanjay. With our KMDCCM. As Pete mentioned, we've been crawling around the building literally. I think we've had six, seven engineers, architects, consultants come in and look at every aspect of the existing deal. We've had the kitchen consultant come by, take a look at the existing equipment, see if any of that would be usable or able to handle the larger yield counts that are going to be needed for the expanded facility. We've had electrical, mechanical engineers that have existing systems. The facts are that they are 20-plus years old and, you know, just like any good building, over time, there is a need for updates and maintenance that needs to be done. From a general 10,000-foot level, the building is sound. There have been structural issues that we've noticed that could prevent it from being used as a long-term solution for Marion County, oh, sorry, Marion, New Rad County. There has been a change in code and standards over the course of the last 20-plus years. And whatever solution we are going to present to you will have to comply with those standards and updated codes. We are not here to present you with a solution that's, you know, a bad day or a short-term solution. We're looking for something that's going to be 20-plus years, you know, how to, to handle the needs of the county. And even beyond that, a project like this is not a 20-year solution. That may be what the bond is going to support, but there has to be a solution that can handle the future growth beyond 20 years. We're talking 50 years down the road. Is there a possible growth scenario that can handle that growth, that expansion and stay in the downtown environment so that 20 years from now, when there's a need for additional beds, you know exactly where it's going to go and how it's going to get added on to. So you're not going through this process again of, where do we put this? Do we move out of town? What do we do here? So again, we have to think about future expenses, expansion scenarios and how that will set up. Cole's got some solutions to present to you and again, like Dustin mentioned, our solution will be tailored to, to meet your needs. We haven't had the opportunity to talk to a lot of the staff, the sheriff or anyone else. So the programs that we've come up with are based on our experience of doing similar-sized facilities in other parts of the state, to name a few. Hancock County, Madison County and Hendricks County are very similar in size to what you're going to need for the near future. And using that experience, we have come to, come up with a program that could meet your needs. It can get tailored based after discussions with sheriff and staff, but generally speaking, that square footage is what we're going to be basing our design solutions on. What you have in front of you again is a basic overall program of about 128,000, 130,000 square feet is what we're projecting. Your needs are going, excuse me, are going to be for what this project is going to be. You have 64,000 square feet in the existing facility and adding the balance of the square footage in new construction will get you to that number. If you're, it's not, is adequate to handle a sheriff's department and inmate population that you've got for the future. We've also noticed that there are existing occupants off the D home. We have to take that into consideration. Is that going to be something that we have to work around in a phasing process or is that something that they're going to have to get relocated while the constructions are in place? And over the course of the next, you know, few meetings, we're going to present options as to how those can work. Does it make sense to keep them there while construction's going on or does it make sense just to try and relocate them if space is available and then do the construction and shoulder quick on duration? All right, Cole's going to go through the plan again. Any questions that you have, please stop us, we'll answer them. This is a very high-level conceptual plan as to how this could work at this location.
Mr. Middlesworth, you were involved in this jail committee process, so please feel free to hop in and any, yeah, any questions that you have.
So the four plan that you see, that's the first four, everything is pretty much color-coded. Just make it easy to present. As you can see, the green area, that is all we are proposing to be heavy renovation. The orange area is all addition and that light purple, pinkish color, that's going to be light renovation. So I'm going to start over by the Sallyport area.
You said again, request, so the green is?
The green is heavy renovation. The orange area is addition and that pinkish-purple color, that is light renovation.
Okay, thank you.
And this is all architectural, so this is time. So I'm going to start over in the existing Sallyport, if you may. It's on the east end of the building. So for a new project from around 360 or 400 beds for the whole entire facility, we, we recommend a renovation, a pretty heavy renovation of the existing intake and booking area. So we would recommend blowing out that south wall of that existing intake and booking area and building on to a, to add a holding area, holding cells, padded cells, just a larger intake and booking area. And then moving on in a, to the west area and the existing medical area, as you can see, if you can see in the, it's the light purple, you can see its reception, that area, that's pretty, it's in good condition as of now. Our recommendation is to renovate the existing indoor rec. You currently have two rec areas that is not needed for just that 92-bed existing area. So we recommend renovating the indoor rec and then enclosing the outdoor rec so you can reuse the indoor rec as a mental health or medical area. We recommend that there's not going to be that much renovation in the existing medical area. And then one of, another one of our recommendations is to expand the medical area south. So you can see that addition with the two on the medical area would be a 2,300 square foot addition. Moving north into the existing housing area, there would be light renovation in there. We propose to double bunk that area. And then that existing, as I just said, that outdoor rec, we would enclose that and that would be their only rec area. And then moving back south, you can see that corridor that we made, that's that would be your secure corridor. One of our biggest things we want to do is keep all of the I-3 occupancy items, the secure areas on the first floor. And the only administration area that was on the first floor was the community corrections area on the southwest side of the existing building. So we would be, are proposing is to move community corrections up to the second floor. So everything on the first level is a secure area. So you can see that secure area goes all the way through to the pod. Another one of the issues, since we are doing that and you still need to access the basement side in the second floor, we recommend an addition with the circulation path on the north side where you can see the stair and elevator. So that would, that would allow you, so if you are a staff worker or an admin, you don't have to go into a secure area to access the existing stairs and elevators. So in our proposal, we would be adding an elevator and stairwell that would access all three levels in a non-secure area. We would need to renovate the kitchen for the additional bed sizes. Right now, you can see that we are renovating the entire existing kitchen and then that addition also adds more of a kitchen area with receiving north of that. You can see the MEP yard, that's the hatched area left of the housing side. We wanted to maintain that just because if you did want to maintain people to stay in this building, you, we wouldn't be able to add any addition in that area. So the, our proposition would be to all of the MEP fixtures, they would have to go there for the, the addition. So we've probably screened off this entire area so it's not an axor. So that's that hatched area in MEP and then you have the lobby area in the front. So that is all for the first floor. Going into the south, to the housing pod area, you favor, we basically have our, our typical design. You can, you can make it into two-man, four-man or dormitory-style housing. So right now we have, I believe we have two, two-man day rooms and then the rest are four and we have two dormitories. We are proposing to, the bottom three day rooms, they would be alternates. We don't think you would need as many, since you are double bunking the existing housing area and you're already adding on this housing pod, we don't necessarily think you need 400-plus beds day one. So our, we're proposing that the bottom three day rooms would be alternates. So the three alternates on the first floor are those, those three day rooms, the medical mental health addition and the intake and Sallyport addition. Those would be the two options to take off to meet a budget. Are there any questions on the first floor?
What's the total back count that you have there now, Cole?
So 360 in the pod, they can, it can be anywhere from 320 to 360 and then 92 beds if we double bunk the existing housing area.
One of the beauties of what Cole has done, showing here is, is the operational efficiency of the facility. You're putting up to 300 inmates around a single control point. And so from operations, you're not having multiple control rooms, but you have breaking up this pod into two. We've seen that done in other locations and that's always very expensive. For each 24/7 man position in a control center, you're talking about a million dollars in operational costs over the course of the year. So we're thinking long-term for you here. So we're thinking long-term for you here. How can we be efficient with our design so that 20, 40 years of operation, you're not spending that million dollars by changing the design and splitting up the controls into two separate options? Also with the expansion capabilities that we're showing here at the bottom right, when you do add beds in the future, you're not adding another staff position, still around that same control point. And so your operational costs do not increase at any point. It's just that you know where you can add your beds without increasing operations.
So moving on to the basement area. We realize once, once we toured the facility, most of, not all of the administration areas. So this is the basement floor plan. Once we toured the facility, we realized that most of the administration areas in the entire building are occupied. This whole entire floor is occupied from every single space, even storage spaces. So we do not propose really anything, no renovation or maybe slightly architectural wise. As you can see, the north side, that orange portion, that is the addition. This is very high level. So really, I just wanted to show you the circulation of how you get through. The design is not thought out yet. So you can see the elevator and stair shaft that accesses all three floors. We are proposing the training room, fitness room, defensive tactics and locker rooms to be on the basement side. And that is pretty much all for the first, or the basement side of the facility. We can go to the second floor now. So this is the second floor of the facility. This is also completely occupied currently. We are proposing, right now, the drug task force, when we were just talking to them, they had kind of talked to us about maybe they'd be better off in another facility. So we thought that'd be perfect for community corrections that is currently on the first floor to move up to that second floor area and drug task force would be moved out of the facility. We noticed when we were touring the investigations area, that, that central portion that you see in the pink area, we have light renovation for that. That is a pretty wide open space and not utilized well enough. So we were thinking that if need be, that could be renovated lightly for additional offices. As you can see, the orange space that is the addition portion, I'll start at the top with it. This is the sheriff's admin. This is very high level. We wanted to ensure that there was enough sheriff's admin and road patrol offices and squad rooms, different things that we, we obviously put in all of our facilities and there was adequate space for that. So that's why we kind of laid out where those spaces occur. So if all of your sheriff's admin were to occur on the second floor with some more space for jail staff, lockers or whatnot, whatever, whatever that they would need. And it also has access directly to the second floor of the housing pod control room. So you'd be able, jail staff, sheriff, sheriff admin would have direct access to that control room if anything were to occur. And they also have direct access to that, the rest of the, the administration area on the second floor. So that is, that is the whole floor plan, conceptual design. I don't know if you guys have any questions on the design or design decisions?
Not at this time for me. One question on the major footprint on the southeast section, it's in pink. That's currently where our pods are for the, what used to be juvenile detention. Are you proposing that remain juvenile or adult?
No, so, sorry, I did not discuss that far enough. So that would be double bunked and that would be for adult housing. And then as you can see in the southwest of the building, you see that where community corrections is, we are proposing, it's really file storage is a bunch of files. And then the south side is community corrections. We are proposing that be laundry trustee housing and juvenile trustee housing because it is directly adjacent to the kitchen and actually laundry room, once it's renovated. And then juvenile housing as well. So that keeps everything on the first floor secure.
So my understanding was, and could be wrong, that the juvenile detention center, as it previously sits, or as it sits now, was more or less the size of cells that needed to be for juveniles, but not necessarily adults. So have you addressed that in this?
So we didn't look at the, we had a jail standards and based on a 10 hour hold, you could double bunk those cells and put two adults in there.
Only for 10 hours?
10 hour lockdowns. So you, the rest of the time, basically doors are open, they're free to go into the day rooms. But for 10 hours maximum, you can lock them down. So typically in the jail, in the, in the evenings after 10 till early morning, that's when the lockdown takes place. And that'll meet the needs of, you know, the 10 hour holes. And you couldn't double bunk that.
So we, we, we fit all the criteria that we need to do.
That is right.
From providing space.
From square footage to natural light, you can, you can double bunk that. And again, with the call, the classification units that we have in our D part and the existing part, from an operational standpoint, it probably makes more sense to house minimum security women in that existing pod. And so you can still meet the standard for the 10 hour holes in that existing space.
Okay, then the next question I have, and I'm understanding, I think, this is the first time I've seen this. The number one here that's got the hash, hash, that's what you're telling us is going to be future? Is that correct?
That is correct. So we will design that and bid it as ultimate.
Right.
And so if you're lucky on Bed End, you've seen a lot of facilities where with a facility like this, they're already doing the work in the other rest of the area. And so, you know, adding three more pods is a lot more, is a lot cheaper than trying to build in the future at some point.
So my question is, is where the juvenile detention center is now, are you thinking forward saying, because we really need to have a place to house our juveniles? We don't have that. So as you're designing this, is it set up where it, because I know, I know they can't hear, see or any, any adults, other prisoners. So is this going to be where we could eventually, one day, turn in and we could have our own juvenile detention center again?
And that is the intent why Cole's laid it out this way is to have a completely separated site and sound.
Scored out if you were on this.
We have some juveniles still there. Yeah, explain that better.
You're good there. So that bottom half of that green box that you see left of you, that's where we would have juvenile housing. And so separate entries, separate access, separate housing, all of that would be completely independent from the adult side of things. But it would be connected for staff to be able to move through, but complete site and sound separation. We do not want to get the county into any legal troubles, you know, we compromise that.
So the trustee housing would be away far enough for the juvenile detention center to be in that area there? Is what you're saying? Okay.
Separation required.
Yes.
One thing before we sign off here again, you know, we're thinking about future expansion capabilities. So this could be 475 beds by the time we take all of the, you know, expansion options, the specialty beds, all of that, 475 plus. So what do you do when you outgrow that? Where do you build out and still be connected to this facility and some existing jail? You know, if that comes down, that could be another option to add another 300 plus beds. And so you'll think 50 years down the road and still have a relevant project for the carry.
Any other high level design questions? Again, this is not yet finished. We're still working through the details. We're working through budgets. As you've seen here, there's, there's multiple options within this, whether we build out every single day room, the additions, those will all be broken out into a menu of options to show you again, a good, better, best, you know? And so our next steps over the next week and a half, we're refining this and working on those budgets with our team. And it would be sometime later next week to meet with the committee and present those findings. And then hopefully if all goes well, get back in front of you all two weeks from now and kind of give you a formal presentation that'll show some costs and other items. Again, you know, going to our scoping agreement, you know, we, we look at that as kind of a phased agreement. You know, initially we got approved to do kind of some preliminary optioning with this being the main focus. That's what we're doing. I know there's discussion of the amendment to our agreement. It sent Connor Sullivan and others some updated exhibits to that that provides some more insight and detail should that agreement get expanded. I think it's critical to know that we, we won't move to the next phase, which would be far more detailed design and ultimately a development of a GMP until we are authorized to do that with a notice to proceed within, within the scoping agreement.
Right, we don't want to run down that road too far. If the commissioners look at it and go, oh, wrong road, got to go this way. Right, because it's a lot of time. So before you get into all those details that certainly Dustin's referring to, before his folks start costing it, we want to make sure we're hitting at least a direction which commissioners like and also the committee, right? Committee likes as well.
So yeah, we, we come two weeks from now and this doesn't hit the mark. Let's go back to the drawing board with the committee and figure out some other options to look at. So.
As we're crunching all this, this data, have we, as a team utilized the certified jail study? That we've already?
Yeah, we've received that, reviewed it, good, taken that, that stuff into consideration.
If I, if I, if you, I have a couple of comments. One, I'd like to thank BW and RQAW team. I've, I've done quite a few of the BOTs and this is, this process they have followed has been correct to a T. That's why the county created the review committee to get the interested stakeholders to get their buy-in and early start a part of the process. You don't want to get 60% of it through the project and just start consulting with, you know, the sheriff and other people who might make use of it. So I applaud you guys for, for getting that done from the very, the inception of the project. This is exactly what you would expect a committee to do, which is again, work with that committee. And as milestones come up, you address that and bring that to the attention of the board of commissioners. And if there's things that need to be updated in the meantime, you know, I know Mr., President Stewart's on the committee. I believe Justin also is on the committee and myself, so we can always answer questions in the meantime. But I just want to say thank you for making the process easier than, than what it is in other places. Dustin mentioned the contract, he did send that to me last week and I sent an updated amendment to Justin. And I do believe there was a concern about the language being somewhat vague in the original scoping agreement. I think this should resolve that issue. It's a pretty detailed two page document that outlines what exactly is going to be done and performed in the scoping, uh, scoping agreement and the services that will be provided by BW and RQAW. And I, I, from a legal standpoint, I think that it's, it's more than reasonably particular enough and identified for what Grant County will be paying for, what Grant County will be receiving. And I think that it would, it would be my recommendation to approve the amendment today if the commissioner is so willing. And, and I want to echo something that I think Pete might've said that this is still a step by step process. They have to come back to the commissioners every so often, whether it's two weeks, a month or whatever it is, and say, hey, here's what we're doing so far. Do we agree, move forward and whatnot? So it's not something where it's a lump sum upfront. It's just to get this ball rolling and every step of the way, we'll have to have an approval from the commissioners, whether an email or a text or even a phone call or a message or a statement in a public meeting so they can move forward. And I believe that is outlined correctly in the original scoping agreement and also the amendment as well. And so I, I wanted to make those few comments. I know that there's the possible consideration of, excuse me, sorry, of either providing the $2,024,000 in change to either the salaries for 2025 or towards this project. The one thing I would say to the commissioners is that there is a significant, significant concern between myself and the DLGF that if you were to go the salary option, that would possibly mean that the budget would have to be reheared. So I believe the Grant County budget's already been adopted for 2025. And at that point in time, you'd have to have another public hearing at the county council level to rehear it. Then a second one to approve it. And I don't know if there's enough time in the calendar year to do that safely. So I would, I would recommend, you know, if you have that with option, you want to go, I, you know, there is a decent amount of risk that, you know, being on your risk adverse level may not feel comfortable with. This project is ready to go. And again, it's not obligating, or it's not saying $2 million upfront. It is just obligating the $2 million, which is the requirement under ARPA and the treasury's guidelines. And the BOT developer will be paid upon, you know, if each milestone is successfully completed too. So with that, I'll take any questions, comments or concerns and I apologize. I just wanted to kind of get that on the record to advise you guys through this.
So Mr. Sullivan, I'm glad you touched on that because that was where I was going next. Can you, can you talk a little bit about, so that $2,024,000, as we've, as we've discussed before, that has to be, and keep me honest on my, on my terminology here.
Absolutely, sir.
That has to be appro, that has to be appropriated by the end of the year?
It has to be obligated by the end, it has to be obligated by the end of the year.
Obligated.
And so by it, by.
And so the easiest way to do.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so the easiest, the easiest way to doing it would be to, and I'm not saying the easiest route is always the best route, but I do believe in this situation, it is the, the easiest and the best route might be, be able to be the same, same option. The scoping agreement, the amendment is before you. It does account for that $2 million in change. Again, you don't have to spend it. It's, it's why I made the comment earlier about, you know, you have to have that things obligated by the end of this year and then either spent or a project concluded by the end of 2026. So having the amendment adopted today, that would meet the obligation required that treasury set forth out for it, which means Grant County gets to keep this money, it doesn't go to, you know, Chicago, Detroit or whoever. Nor knows who else would probably want to take the money and use it for some other social welfare project or something. But this project, this will allow it to stay here in Grant County. We have, I think, between the council, the commissioners, the sheriff, there has been an identified problem with the, either the jail or possibly judicial system. So this is moving you in the direction of resolving part of that problem. And it also helps you maintain and keep those ARPA funds here.
So if I'm hearing you correct, Mr. Sullivan, if, if we went the, if we went the, the payroll or, if we went the payroll route for 2025, if I'm hearing you right, that's kind of a coin flip. There's a lot of red tape.
That is correct.
There's a lot of hoops to jump through on that. And it's kind of a coin flip on whether or not that would actually stay in Grant County. Whereas if we went this route where we kind of earmark it for, to be used on the, on the D home, that's pretty much, that's pretty much an easy process. We can have that done by December 31st.
If you, if you were willing to approve the amendment today, you would have this $2.2 million, $2,024,000 in change obligated. And you wouldn't have to worry about that. You'd have to update your spending plan and you could move forward with that. The concern with the salaries is it's, is the budget process. If this were something that would have been done maybe in June or earlier before the budget was adopted, we could have had more time to account for it. The other places that have used it for salary, I was doing my research and talking to some other people about it. It was more for premium pay, the back pay equal that were worked during, you know, like the quote unquote hazardous time during COVID. And in order to do that, you can't just blanket and say, hey, I'm going to pay these employees that were, worked that hazard, pay X amount of money. You have to go back and identify when they worked, how much they worked, how much, how much you're going to give each one. And that in itself is kind of, I would say, an administrative nightmare. It's not impossible, but that's something you'd want to start that process maybe six months ahead of time. But going forward, the option that you guys have considered, which would be supplementing the, setting the funds for. in the set, the funds for 2025, as far as I can tell, that's not been widely practiced. Again, I don't, I'm not saying it's, it's, I think it can be legally done, but you might run into the time crunch of not having the funds properly out obligated in time. If you guys were to say, hey, we really want to do that, we would buckle down and really try to figure it out. But I, I would be remiss if I did not say I would have a significant concern that we would not have everything done with the two public hearings from the county council and everything to the DLGF in time to make sure you met the obligated definition under the Treasury current guidelines. But yes, to answer your question, Mr. President, yeah, this would be, again, the easiest option's not always the right one or the way you should choose, but I do think in this case, they, they are very closely aligned, if not maybe the exact same option, if that, if that answers your question, sir.
And to be clear, that's, that's your recommendation, correct?
I, if, if I were a Grant County Commissioner and I did not want these funds to go towards some, I'm not getting into what those other people probably would use their funds for in Chicago or something, you know, I, I would say I would want to get this, I would want to use these funds in a manner that is resolving an issue that has been identified, which again, this, the jail has been identified as an issue. I, I would feel comfortable if I were Grant County Commissioner moving forward with that. Correct? Yes, sir.
I'll open it up to my two colleagues here. Any questions for Mr. Sullivan at this time?
Just got one. Connor, as we're advertising, I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody in the room, we've advertised to use funds either as scoping fee or loss recovery salaries. If we advertise it as such, does that give us the caveat we need to carry it into 25? And then they can, the council can actually look at it again?
Unfortunately not, because it needs to be obligated in Treasury, you know, however many months ago before they refined what the obligation definition met. It more meant if you had a plan and you had something on paper saying you're going to do it, that would, that would somewhat be satisfy, satisfy that. However, now with the new definition of obligation, they either want some kind of contract, some kind of MOU, some kind of purchase order, or something where an administrative kind of maneuvering such as this, they would want an approved budget form prob, from like the DLGF or a state port of accounts saying that it shows that the money is going to that. And the problem would be is that just by saying, hey, we would use it for the salary, there's the risk of not getting it done in time for the calendar year. And the other thing I guess I'm thinking about too is, I know the, the 2025 budget, I know every county is slightly different, but I think the 2025 budget actually starts sometime in December. Is that correct, Madam Auditor?
No, it starts January 1.
It does, okay. So it doesn't start like, it doesn't start the last, or the first paper, it doesn't start the last week of, or second week of, or sorry, third or fourth week of December? And I know, I know every county does it slightly different, but the concern would be is that they would look at it and say, well, we don't know for sure if you're going to have those funds actually obligated in time. And quite frankly, if it's come this close, the Treasury is probably going to look more favorably towards reclaiming that money. And so I say it would just be, it'd be a risk that you would have to be, I want you to be aware of if you were to go down that route, Commissioner Bartley, for it. And like I said, I, I would be, like I said, I would be entirely remiss if I did not say that there's a chance, if not a pretty high probability chance, that I don't know if we could get it done in time and we'd have to be cutting a check back to the Treasury sometime in January.
Well, again, I don't anticipate this happening, but what if we did commit the funds toward the potential scoping construction future and, and something blows up at the beginning of, of next year that we can't actually follow through with that obligation? Do they give us any type of opportunity to redirect that money or are we going to lose it?
So what would happen is if, if you, if it's a capital project and you use it for the initial, let's say, soft costs or professional fees for a capital project, if for some reason the project does not occur or does not conclude, at that point in time, the project's over and the, and the money would be spent. However, if you were to, say you were to enter into the scoping or the amendment today and as, as it's written right now, it's not a money upfront, it's they get paid as they go kind of situation. If there's money that has not been paid, if it is, if the project is for whatever reason ceased to exist, you can then at that point recalibrate and put it towards another project that would be a permitted use. And that's because you have the paperwork done prior to the end of this year.
The way I'm hearing you, the way I'm hearing you, Connor, is, is if something was to blow up, we could still use that $2 million to do things to the D home. If we decided we weren't moving forward with this project at all, we could still use the money, the $2 million for different things in the D home. Is that what, is that what I understand?
That is correct, yeah. Because the idea is you want to get everything under paperwork and documented before December 31st and everything obligated. And that's why this, I believe this would be the safer option. The salary option, I just, I consider it be not getting the paperwork concluded by the end of this year, which then would make it not even a, an option for 2025. And then at that point, you would lose the money. If the project, if you were to sign the agreement or the amendment today and the project blows up in January 18th or something like that, at that point in time, you can recalibrate and either, you know, go move a different route, spend the money on D home, or there'd be a process where we would work with Coonrod and Associates to update an amendment, amendment planning, sending in some kind of, and I, I can't remember the exact term, but you can send something to the Treasury outlining what happened at that point in time, as long as you meet certain things, you would be able to say, okay, we can, we're going to use it for this permitted project and I am, Treasury would sign off on it at that point in time. It, it's part of its, the cost is outlined in stone, just because no one's had to have their funds reclaimed yet. So that won't, that doesn't happen until December 31st of 2024. But one sure way of making sure it doesn't happen is to have it properly obligated prior to then. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
What am I hearing from Mr. Middlesworth, President of the Council, as well as incoming Commissioner? I'd like to get your feedback on what you're thinking about all this.
And also any questions that you might have for Connor as well?
Thank you. Obviously that we support the detention center being remodeled, rehabilitated. We know that juvenile crimes have gotten out of hand in this county. And obviously during the 25 budget, we would have had put back in all the costs that are associated with running the detention center and the budget. So we are prepared to open it back up. We know it needs a roof and several things. So I think what RQAW and BW has done is presented us some options that we can look at in 25 for sure. But I think that no matter what, we got to protect our asset, being that juvenile detention center we know needs work. So I really don't have any other questions.
You're comfortable with everything that you've heard, as well as the council, they should be lockstep with this as well?
I would think so. And obviously I'm one of seven.
Correct.
But we know as a council body that that building does need some, some work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll go ahead just real quick. I'll open it up to the public. If the public has any questions for RQAW or BW at this time, we'll still have, we'll still have some public comment at the end of the meeting. But for the, for this project specific, if there's anybody that has any questions for these gentlemen, please come to the, please come to the podium and we'll just take a couple minutes to do that. Okay.
Thanks, Paul. I just wanted to clarify, you're saying that if something was to go wrong after the first of the year, the $2,024,000, if we was to cease this project, we can then take that amount of money and put it toward any kind of qualified project. So a portion toward the D home, a portion toward something else in the county. Is he saying any qualified project or just?
It's just a D home.
That's the way I understand.
That's the way I'm understanding it as well.
Mr. Sullivan, can you, can you talk to that?
Yes, if I heard correctly, so there is, I said, the first rule you want to be is make sure you have funds obligated. We have funds obligated that at that point in time, if the project were to dissolve or go away, we would be able to at least have the opportunity to, to maneuver through that process. If we do not have funds obligated by that time successfully, then, then it doesn't matter what project we choose because the funds will not have been obligated by the end of this year and they will be reclaimed by the Treasury. So that's the first rule you want to make sure you accomplish and successfully get over. The second one is say the project were to dissolve in January, somewhere sometime after 2025. At that point in time, the easiest route for you to do would be to still use the funds towards the project that was identified, which would be in this case, the D home or the jail, whatever, whatever it may be. However, I do not think it's impossible to use those funds for another permitted purpose. I, I just think at that point in time, it'd be something that myself and Coonrod would not work with the Treasury on to figure out that process. Again, they haven't set specific guidelines on how to go about that because again, they aren't sure how much money will be reclaimed. But I do know that with how the Treasury's been working and how their, their FAQs and guidance and their, their finals and limited rules have come out, that if that were to occur, I do believe that that'd be a possible option to pivot and spend it on another permitted use. The easiest thing we'd do would be to spend it on the project itself, but maybe just some different step of it or something. But I do think you have the opportunity in 2025 to, to make that move to another permitted use, which could, would be quite a bit of different things on the revenue reduction. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir. I think our contract also is for the jail project.
It is.
It doesn't specify in our scoping agreement that it's just for the D home.
That is correct.
So I believe under permitted uses, you can put it towards anything at the existing jail. If you want us to relook at the design of a new jail, if you want us to get into D home, it is specifically jail in our contract, if that helps.
Okay, that does, that does couple up.
And that's, that was done by the commissioners, just so that, again, it goes to every step of the, the committee is vital in this process. There, a lot of the stakeholders are involved, but it still has to, every step of the way, it has to go to the Board of Commissioners. So say the D home's not looking like a viable option, then it's a new jail or something, then at that point in time, the commissioners can still weigh in on it too. So it provides that flexibility for it. So that, that was, that was done so on purpose.
Excellent. Gentlemen, any other questions for either Mr. Sullivan or BW or QAW? Any thoughts on how to proceed?
Of this amendment that we've gotten from Mr. Sullivan, is, is this affecting the primary, the $50,000?
I believe that Connor jumped in here, but I believe the amendment is for the $2 million.
That is, Mr. President, that is correct. The amendment is for $2,024,000 and change. And it also specifically talks and updates the language about what is included in the services for the scoping, uh, scoping agreement. It talks about what can be expected in Phase 1 of the project, what can be expected in Phase 2 of the project, and it talks about going all the way up to establishing an agreed upon guarantee maximum price. So that, that it's not only the, the compensation amount that's been updated, but it also provides that language, which I believe is, resolves the issue of a vagueness concern of the, the previous professionals or the scoping agreement, which is a professional service agreement.
Does that answer your question? Partially. Correct me if I'm wrong. We've initially agreed to pending our attorney's approval on the 50. And I'm assuming on the 2, 2 million. Is that one agreement now or are there still two separate agreements?
There, it's, it's one agreement with an amendment, Commissioner Bartley. It's, uh, it's, since the original agreement was technically approved at a public meeting. I know it wasn't signed at that point in time, the, under, had to be reviewed by, by the county legal. And so this, this, it's two separate documents to sign, it's just an amendment to the agreement. So it's still one agreement, which is updated terms that would help, that in my opinion, resolve those issues of vagueness and also protects the county from an ARPA standpoint, make sure that the funds are allocated towards the project and not going to be reclaimed by Treasury.
You still look perplexed.
We did. We did. Big decision.
Commissioner, maybe I can help you a little bit. Our intent is to spend the original $50,000 towards scoping and then stop until we get notice to proceed from you to start design. So if we get finished at the D home, you don't like it, say back to the drawing board, we're back to drawing board, we're not spending any of that $2 million, other than the first $50,000 until we have approval of a scope. If we don't get there, you can reuse it towards other.
And I, and I think on our, on our part, what we're trying to do, you know, because it is late in the game. We've been talking about spending this money since February. And here we are in November and all I got a few minutes, a few meetings left in the year. So we just want to make sure we're doing everything right, the way we need to, and just making sure eyes are dotted and t's are crossed. And we've got a plan that can be the best for Grant County. That's, that's where I'm at. And, you know, what I've heard today, because this is the first I've been a part of it, because I haven't been on the committee, I don't know what's been said. First time I've seen drawings, first time I've seen this at all this morning. That's when we got it. And so I'm trying to get through all that in a little bit of a hurry. And when it's $2 million, that's a lot of money. And so I think that's the reason for all the questions, not doubting your ability or your capability or what great things you could do for Grant County. It's just absorbing it all and making sure it's the right thing to do. So appreciate the committee and all the work that you guys have done and trying to do that. How many meetings have you guys had?
Half a dozen, maybe, together.
So you guys have been, we're, we're seeing it for the first time, right? I think it's Theresa and, and Bartley and I are just kind of saying, okay, where is this? Where are we going? We want to make sure the money's right and that we've got everything accounted for so we don't get clawed back. So that's, that's the hesitancy.
Where, where are we in, in the appropriation process? We've already advertised all of this. So it will be coming to the council on the 20th, correct?
That's correct. It'll be in this paper Wednesday.
So that is out there. The mechanism is set for the council to act. And we have a meeting two days before the council. What does it hurt for us to wait to the 18th?
Mrs. Commissioner Bartley, I do not think from a legal standpoint it would hurt to do so, if that, if I heard the question, question correctly. I do understand that this is a substantial contract, a dollar amount, a substantial amount. And so I don't think that would hurt from that standpoint.
That just gives us two weeks to digest. We think we already know what the answer is. It's just giving us the opportunity. We have the meeting before, we don't have to rush that and say we've got to do another meeting before the council because it's already established.
Right.
And the council's done everything they can to wait on the, that final recommendation, recommendation that comes on that Monday. That, that would be my, my suggestion is that we chew a little bit and vote on, on the 18th.
Commissioner, I just can't. And again, so I'm also on Fisher City Council, so I've been there five times. So I understand that the DLGF works and I understand the time that, what you're there at. And what Mr. Sullivan was saying is basically you're going to start to handcuff yourself if you choose not to. And I think the 18th is fine to do. I don't have any issue when you sign that. But also if you change directions at that point, now you've got less time to move that money around so you don't lose it.
I don't.
That's all, I think that's all Connor was saying.
That's correct, that is correct, sir. That is, yeah, that is absolutely correct.
I don't anticipate any changes or anything like that. But like I say, to digest this, and oh, by the way, on page 13, you got somebody from Grant County that doesn't even live here for a signature. So I'd like to have a little bit more time to read the document.
That's still on the professional service agreement.
You see what I'm saying? I mean, we just, we just haven't had a time to really dive into this. We, we got it this morning, right? It was, was this the one that was sent to us, received the amendment yesterday, yesterday, on Sunday? Right? So I, I think that's the, the big thing right now. And again, just to digest it just a little bit longer, I think would be good.
So if I'm hearing you right, we were, we're not going to take any action on the, on the amendment today. We will take, we'll take the next two weeks, review it, come back on November 8.
that. Like I say, it's a lot of money. And just wanted to make sure we're doing the right thing. I appreciate Mr. Middlesworth being here today and giving us food for thought for the council, as well as him coming in and stuff like that. Because he, they're going to be, they're going to be the ones dealing with it. And we're just wanting to make sure that everything's all right. And, and from that standpoint. That's, I, I, I would agree.
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion that we table the amendment until the 18th and your vote on the 18th.
Formal motion?
Formal motion.
That's like a man.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Barnsley, a second by Commissioner Wright to table the, let me get this right here, to table the amendment. And we will come back and vote on it on, when we're the other November 18th.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I guess we'll see you gentlemen on the 18th.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time and great presentation. Thank you.
Well done. Well done.
Yeah.
All right. We will move on to Mrs. Bunker with IMG, 2025 Health Renewal Review. Save the best for last.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, or good afternoon. I don't know, whatever.
Close.
Daylight savings, time changes and everything. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for trusting myself and our entire team at IMG for your benefits here at Grant County Government for, you know, advocating on behalf of you all and your employees. We do appreciate that. We will start the review of the recommendations for all of your benefits starting on January 1st of 2025. I'm going to start with the medical and pharmacy plan first and foremost. We do not have any anticipated plan design changes for 2025. So that means your deductibles, co-pays, out of pocket maxes, still offering the one plan. We're going to continue, the recommendation is to continue with the three tier plan design, that first tier being Marion Health and the UHC designated premium providers, along with tier two being the Choice Plus Network. And then tier three being the ALBA Network benefits. Tier one and tier two would continue to cross accumulate as they currently do. We recommend retaining UMR for the TPA services and Optum as your pharmacy benefit manager, which is what it currently is in maintaining that current pharmacy formulary due to just less disruption for employees and the total cost of the plans, including the rebate position. We did do a full pharmacy benefit manager remarket this year and Optum still puts overall, considering with the disruption of employees to move PBMs to stay with Optum PBM. We are making a recommendation to move your stop loss coverage from Tokyo Marine HCC to excess rate for 2025. This does include keeping the specific deductible at 200,000 and your aggregate corridor at 125%. Excess rate does have the best overall fixed costs on everything, including your specific and aggregate premiums, as well as the best aggregate factors for expected and maximum claims. This does include two lasers, but that has been factored into the overall cost and really does put Grant County Government in the best financial position compared to other offers, including your renewal from Tokyo Marine HCC. Maintaining, we do recommend maintaining your organ transplant rider coverage with Tokyo Marine HCC. We are recommending continuing with Wellworks for you, your wellness program, to validate the incentives on the medical premiums for 2026. We recommend the continuation of the onsite medical screenings through Marion Health as well. Due to medical and pharmacy increased spend and all of the market factors, it is recommended to increase employee contributions slightly for 2025. When we presented this in 2024, it was mentioned that a slight increase would be coming in 2025. It should be noted that the last increase to employee contributions was in 2020. So given the biweekly contributions based on payroll, we are recommending for employee only a slight increase, which would be an increase of $3.35 of pay more. So that would put employee only at $70.30. Employee spouse would go up $6.24 of pay, which would be $131.13. Employee children would go up by $6.80 of pay, which would be $91.78. And family would go up $7.21 of pay, which would be $151.41. As far as your additional benefit lines, which are called ancillary lines, the vision, critical illness and accident, we would recommend remaining with United Healthcare for 2025. You will have no rate increases or plan changes. We do recommend, again, retaining all of these lines with United Healthcare. We also recommend retaining your group term life, voluntary life, voluntary short term and long term disability with One America. They do not have any plan changes or rate changes for 2025. With, I will note that with some of those voluntary lines, such as voluntary life, and sometimes with the critical illness, you might change age banders, bands, I'm sorry, age bands. So therefore, an employee may experience a potential increase due to their age factor, but the actual plan rates are not shifting. We also recommend retaining your dental coverage with the Delta Dental, but there is an anticipated minimal increase to rates for 1.1 of 2025. We recommend continuing with your benefit administration through Employee Navigator. We recommend doing your 1094 to 95 e-filing for a small fee through Employee Navigator. And we recommend the continuation of Cobra coverage and Cobra Administration through BVP. Your open enrollment timeline, we are looking at opening, open enrollment up on November 13th and closing the open enrollment down on November 27th. Does anyone have any questions for me at this time?
Just a comment. That, that IMG and you have worked very hard on behalf of the county over the last four years. Since we had that last increase, we have been able to consistently shave off expenses through the wellness and some of our other programs. And so they have, they have done just a yeoman's job of taking care of the county and I greatly appreciate it. And I, I, I agree with the recommended changes.
I can speak to my nine to five employer that their insurance increases just came out last week and they were significantly higher than this. So this is small potatoes.
This might be one of the first years that the employee actually got a raise higher than their insurance due to what's going on, right? And their cost of insurance, right? Which is great.
It's important to note that, you know, we do, you know, as all of these considerations and recommendations are being made, that, you know, the employees of Grant County, you all in your office and your team do take care and consideration of all those employees. And we understand that your benefits are part of your total compensation package. So we do appreciate you valuing that and doing your best to keep those costs as minimal as possible for the employees and their families, while still striving for the best health outcomes of everyone.
Justin, I know you did a lot of work on this. Do you have anything to add or any?
I would support these recommendations. We've met with Michelle and her team, painful times going over this. She's done a very good job.
So we need, commissioners need to approve these.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
The recommendation to increase the biweekly rates, I don't agree with because we currently have a very healthy balance in our health insurance fund. I've already taken into consideration an increase next year when we get the 25 budgets. So I don't, I don't see this as necessary for '25. We might look at it in the future, but for '25, I don't see that it's necessary. That's just why I'm in here.
Okay. So did I hear you right? That you feel like we should just leave for 2025, the, the insurance, the proposed increases in the insurance?
I do.
We can just leave it?
For '24, we had used the $17,000 per employee for the contribution into the health insurance fund. We did increase that to $17,500 for next year. So the contribution to that fund is kind of covered now.
Okay.
Could I add a comment too? And going off of what Ms. Starbus stated, the $17,500 budgeted number is based on per eligible employee and not per enrolled employee. So I do applaud you all on budgeting based on per eligible, because we never know who's going to jump on or jump off the plan. So.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm wrong, but during the quarterly meetings that we've had, haven't we talked about that we would need probably consistently over a period of years of that employee contribution? And as much as I understand that we've kind of got a buffer right now, I think that we need to start that incremental step up so that it isn't a sticker shock as bad in the future. So $3, three more dollars or so a pay, I think is well worth it. And, and I'm not going to get into all the Medicare stuff, but I'm going to pay three times as much now with Medicare than what the county employees are paying. And, and I just, that is an awesome plan. So I, I'm thinking $3 versus 300 extra for me is well worth it. I would, I would encourage you to go ahead.
Have you, I would ask Ms. Jarvis, have you seen sticker shock? You've been here how long?
Almost 29 years.
Yeah. So has, has the employee seen some sticker shock sometime when it's come? Is it something that we can go ahead? And I'm kind of agreeing with my colleague. I, you know, three, three something of pay, right? That's what it is. $3.35 of pay for an employee, $6.24 for pay. Do we, do we build that fund up just in case there is a sticker shock one year and it protects our employees a little bit better? Or we can use that, those funds that we have? And you're the auditor. You, you guys know what's, what's going on. I, I, I don't look at those numbers.
Well, I can't foresee what happens in the future, but I do know where we at, where we are at currently. So we did have a $7 million balance in that fund.
And that fund?
That was on September 30th.
That's a pretty healthy fund.
Yes. Very healthy.
Okay.
I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but one heart transplant or, or one major, I can say it, brain aneurysm.
Oh, yeah.
And finances changed real quick. So I would encourage us to stay on the side of caution.
And I'm, as your advisor, fine with whatever you all choose to do. You know, our goal is always just to think of a long-term strategy for your health plan and keeping, you know, all funds and employees as healthy as possible. So whatever decision is made, we, you know, are completely in agreement with.
Good discussion. They can go up or down either way, but I would, I would move to approve the IMG proposal with the, the increase as presented. I'll support that with the, with that because again, I know about brain bleeds and I know how much all that costs. It can, it can take down a fund real quick. And so like I say, it's not, it's not an absorbent amount. I would support my colleague's motion.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Barnsley, a second from Commissioner Wright to approve the recommendations for 2025 benefits renewal, to approve that as presented, we have here. So any other questions or discussion for either our auditor or Mrs. Bunker? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Yeah. All right. We will move on to public comment. We are getting late in the morning. So at this time, the public is invited to speak for the board. Please approach the podium and recognize by the president, state your name, address, concerns or comments. No complaints, accusations or name calling regarding personnel will be allowed during this public discussion time. A time limit of three minutes will be given. It is expected that professionalism and courtesy is displayed at all times during the public comments portion of the meeting. It is 11:47. We will go up until, up until noon if anybody would like to speak. All right. Seeing nobody approach the podium, our next meeting will be Monday, November 18th, and we are officially in recess. Thank you.